Good evening, everyone. The time is seven thirty-three. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um, Councilwoman Jones, could you do the invocation, please?
Truly, good evening, everybody. Our eternal God, our Father, we thank you so much, Father, for how you watched over us, protected us, and kept us all through the day and up from the last meeting. We ask you now, Father, in the name of Jesus, to preside over this meeting. Let your Holy Spirit run rampant, oh God, and move through our hearts, oh God, that we would do the business of the city, oh God, with inclusivity and diversity for all. We thank you for each and every administrator, administrative, the administrative department, for the executive department, for the legislative branch of persons, and the police department, the public works department that takes care of our city, and each and every member of those departments, Lord. We ask you to continue to bless them and move by your spirit and use them for your glory, Lord. We do this for your glory and none other, God. And we thank you, Lord. Continue to bless our citizens, Father, whatever they stand in the need of, God. If we can be a vessel, oh God, to help them, to encourage them, to lead them on, we ask you, Father, to bring them in our path, Lord, that that might be done for your glory. We thank you again, Lord. Let your, please have presence over this meeting. Give us wisdom, give us understanding, give us clarity, that we may do things in decency and order. In Christ Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
So roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Here.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Here.
Councilman Hairston.
Yeah.
Councilman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President Curtis.
Here.
You have a quorum all are accounted for.
Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, uh, tonight is the work session, final work session, hopefully, uh, to go over the budget. Uh, how we'll break it down is we'll just go through the budget to make sure, um, any final questions you have, uh, gets answered. And then, uh, once we go through your final questions, um, then we can transition to the, uh, big ticket item, which is the, uh, salary piece, which we will adjourn, uh, to close session, so that, um, we can get, um, have some questions answered as it relates to that. Uh, so, oh, can't move forward without accepting the agenda. So is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
That will.
Is there a second? Oh, second it. Okay, second by Vice President Ferguson. Any discussion? Any discussion or any opposition? Hearing none, then by unanimous consent, the agenda is approved. Okay. Let me pull up the budget so we can go through. Well, it's obviously, see. All right. So what we'll do is just we'll go through each section again. If you have no questions, we'll move right on to the next, uh, um, department uh, and move that way so we can knock everything out at one time. Let me open this desktop. And now share. All right. Start with, um, the American Rescue Plan. Uh, Mr. Dean, you could correct me if I'm going through this the wrong, Mr. Stewart, sorry. You can correct me if I'm going about this the wrong way as it relates to the, the packet that you sent out, but I believe we're starting on page five with the ARPA. Correct.
Um, not really. Um, okay, so the document I sent with regard to the changes that we have done from meeting on the sixth um, to the adjustments to meeting on the seventh. Um, it would be best if we go to page ten where we start with the administrative, um, department.
And what happened here? So page ten, we're looking at the first item, which was communication.
Um, what we have practiced actually did is move communications to the general operations, um, department. Why? Um, we have actually done it for all department, and these are the office phones. Um, phones like cell phones are kept in their respective departments. Um, and this is something we discussed earlier, that we would move, um, all these communication devices to the operating, general operating department.
Yeah.
Um, the second item um, was a special event. Um, which on the meeting on the sixth as well, um, we, there was a discussion to move funds um, from the executive department to the special fund and admin. Um, there were discussions about moving or merging some of the special events in executive to, for example, the police department, as I think it was the trunk or treat, and Harvest Day was going to be on the same day. Um, so, and that's what happened, I think, last year, so we merged those together.
Yep. Okay, so I'll open up to the council as it relates to the administrative department. Are there any questions? Any questions, uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Okay, so we moved, we've moved the special events into the administrative department, but it's not giving, okay, there was a number of special events from the executive office that were going to, with, I, I'm assuming that they were going to try to do this year that they tried to do last year, but only certain ones got done. I think, uh, in order not to tax the administration, um, this year going forth with the special events, the adminis, the, um, city manager should take a close look at what events actually, um, uh, will serve the people in a, in a way where all the people of the city of Glen Arden will be served, and whatever, you know, comes along with that, but, uh, there were a lot of events, and I think that we need to look at how many events we're actually going to have, how many are, are, are an obtainable goal. Uh, because, uh, I think one of the council members mentioned before that we spend a lot of money in special events, but if there's special events that are going to, um, serve our, our citizens, special events that are going to, um, enhance our community, special events, not just to have an event, because it's, it, there's a, there's a certain date designated uh, in a calendar to say that there's an event. I think that needs to be looked at, and I also thought in the budget we were gonna, like, in the legislative budget, we specifically say, we're going to have Shred Day, we're going to have, um, Glen Arden Day, there will be a expungement day, there will be a mental health, not mental health, I'm sorry, cancer awareness day. So I, I'm not seeing that in this special events. That was what I was kind of looking for, that, uh, it would be looked at and nailed down to what events, you know, were going to be, uh, tried to had.
So you're looking for a breakout of the events?
Yes, that, yes. And then, uh, approximately, like, we know in our, in a legislative budget, that Glen Arden Day, we're going to, we're, we're possibly going to spend thirty thousand dollars, maybe less, hopefully less, you know, and we're going to spend so much, we have an idea from the events that we've had before, that this is on the expungement day, we know we spent this amount of money, so they get, it'll give us a general idea of how much money they're, they're thinking on expending, uh, for those special events in the administrative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I have another question concerning the communication. So that you, when you're going to move all the communication of the, the landlines to want to the general operating fund. So the amount of money, like telephone expense in the administrative office here, they're saying it was, um, fifty-four hundred dollars or sixty-five hundred dollars. This way, would we be able to, um, bring the, the, the cost down for each, uh, uh, just the cost down across the board?
Um, what that does, uh, if I may, Mr. President, um, what you have done is reduce, yes, it does reduce the costs on each department, and, um, the admin department, the general services or general operations department will take on more. Um, it's, sometimes it's difficult to, um, categorize these expenses. Most expenses that goes to general operations are those that we are having a hard time trying to to specify as to say, this belong there, this belong there, but for this, it's best for us to just put it to the, um, general operations. Cell phones is different, because we could really follow the different departments.
Right, but, uh, with the landlines, like, my landline is no more than two hundred dollars a month, you know, so, um, I'm saying with, with, instead of each department saying, I spend sixty-five hundred dollars, I spend, uh, five thousand, I spend three thousand, which we, we have one phone system, and you have the same lines on there, so you're paying for those, uh, same lines every month, and this, and the one, unless you're paying for, I'm not sure if the city is paying for a phone system, you're still paying for a phone system, or that's, uh, not so with the landline?
With the landline, it is, um, it is hard to dis- distinguish the difference between each, um, department. So that's why it's best for us.
Right, I understand that, but I'm saying, is the city paying for a telephone system and the lines associated with it, or are they just paying for the lines that are associated with it? Because I can't see it, the, a telephone system, we're paying, uh, where we're paying sixty-five hundred dollars a year, maybe for the whole system, but not each department. That's why I'm thinking that once we do this, we take this out of everybody's budget, that that line item, the, the, uh, the, um, monies will be reduced. And we'll, we'll know how much we pay every year for the service that Verizon provides, or whoever provides.
Yes, um, that is true, and we will be in a better position to identify, um, how much we're paying, and it should reduce the cost as well. So, yes, that is correct. Yes.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? May I cross this, see your hand? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question on the special events funds. So under the executive branch, everything was broken out by costs, and that's exactly what it costs for the entire year. We ran those events each year after year, and they've never cost over twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars. So, um, relative Harvest Day rewind, it actually is a welcome in my fall, it is nothing to do with Halloween, which is trunk or treat. So I just wanted to clarify those two points that were spoken. Thank you.
Thank you, May Cross. All right, well, we're gonna, um, Councilman Herring?
Yeah, I do have a question about the communication. So we don't get an itemized bill that says who called who on a, on a, on a, on a city, on a, on a city, uh, landlines?
Yes, so the bill is itemized. Um, bill is itemized. Um, however, it is, um, a bit difficult trying to, um, track phones to their respective department. That is a, is a difficult, um, task that the council department have been trying to, to resolve. Um, so at this point, we just, we just really want to put it to the general operations, because it's a one cost that the city pays.
So what is on the itemized bill? It should be the phone number and calls, right?
I, no, I'm sorry. You don't get, they don't give you that anymore. You don't get calls on a, a, a landline item, a bill.
Do you get the phone that make calls?
Unless, unless they have a message service, do they, I don't think they have message service, I think they have unlimited, where you can make call out.
Exactly, so there's just one bill, I mean, it's the same amount every month. Um, and as I said, sometimes it's difficult, um, you know, tracking which department or office phone it's related to.
So, okay, I'm, I'm not understanding, because every place I've worked, even with the landlines, you would at least know what phone number, how much each phone number, how much each, how much each, uh, phone number is being charged, you know, for that month, you know, so you get a bill. You get a bill, now this is just for the, a basic, I mean, a basic phone system, I mean, if, if you know how much is coming through, how much the treasurer called, I mean, who, or, 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 how much, I mean, how many calls are made from his phone, or how many calls made from his staff phone, or the clerk phone. So somebody got on our, got on our phones and called Belgium and talked for four hours, and it's a thousand dollars, you wouldn't know who did it. You wouldn't know which phone that made that, made that phone call.
Yes, we would, because that's an overseas call or long distance, but other calls, there is no itemization of what calls are made. For cellphone, yes, but not for office phones. Go ahead. So unless it's overseas or long real, uh, well, overseas and long distance, but we don't get a breakdown as to how much each, um, phone, it's just a flat rate for each phone.
It's a flat rate for each phone?
Yes.
So each phone is, I mean, for local cars, I know it's just basically a basic rate, but you get a bill that shows that they do being charged a flat rate for every phone that's in the building?
No.
Yeah. No, so each.
Hold on, hold on, one sec, one second. So, uh, Councilwoman Jones, if, uh, you can mute yourself, please, and then, uh, what's your turn? I'll go back to you, and um, Mr. Stewart, Councilman Herring asked a question, you can now answer.
Yes, so, yes, each phone has a bill or has a line as to what that cost is.
Okay.
But they're all the same. You know, there, there's no difference in, in each department, what the cost is, you know, it does.
Only if this, all this is caused or made, then it'd be charged against, yeah.
Yes, if you call overseas, that's a serious thing. Yeah.
So, so it, so I, I guess I'm, I'm not understanding why it cannot be tracked, um, per department, if you know what the extension is at a phone. Even though it's a flat rate, it's still, if, if every phone is being charged fifty dollars, then that expense should be in that department. And any long distance, so any long distance calls would not be associated with that department? It is just, the city is just picking it up under general?
So if a long distance call is made, then we'd have to go into that, um, system to determine, um, who made that call. But there should not be any.
But it, yeah, there's, there's a lot of should not be, but we know it probably will be, but, uh, but I, I, I'm still saying, though, again, if a department makes, you know, a thousand dollars in long phone calls, that's going to be charged against general over here. When it should be going against the department? Correct?
I, yes, I see what you're saying, but, um, as I said, that would be an extraordinary item, and we would have to deal with it then.
Um, I just still, I still think each department should be responsible for expenses and communications is an expense, it should be within that department, even if the phone, even if each phone is only being charged a flat fee, and you have ten phones, and each flat fee is fifty dollars, it should, you should be getting hit with that thousand dollars or whatever it is for the flat fee for each phone, so, I mean, that's just my feelings. All right, thanks.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Herring. Councilman Ferguson?
Okay, I'm going back to the special events. Um, the thirty-one eight, is that, um, including, um, the executive and the administrative special events?
Yes, it does.
Yes, and, and what Mr. Stewart's going to do, as Councilwoman Jones has suggested, is itemize that thirty-eight thousand dollars, allocate a slice to each event that, uh, is in the budget for twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Stewart, they, um, does that include the, I guess, the, um, email that we, uh, received with the, um, additional uh, events that the mayor submitted?
Okay, so the request that came from the mayor is to account for six, is to account for twelve thousand dollars, and this is in the um, membership and, um, conference area of her department. Those amounts are not there now, but this is a request that we are looking to see if the council would approve for her so that we could put these funds into the executive department.
So short answer is, I know, you know, you're talking about, but none of that is in this version of the budget, correct, Mr. Stewart?
Yes, exactly.
So we won't be addressing that, or that's just, we, we're disregarding that, or what?
Uh, that wasn't even a starter from our understanding. We've gone through one pass of the budget. Uh, we had the changes of what we wanted, uh, the changes that the mayor submitted were not in line with what the council approved for this version of the budget, which we're reviewing now, so it did not make it.
Okay, so that wouldn't, okay, so you're talking about the entire, um, email, the twelve thousand, and then the, uh, the other, the administrative, the eighty-two hundred for the administrative, um?
So the, the eighty-two thousand, that would have, that would have been in the, um, the administrative department because of the executive assistant, he actually is accounted for in the admin department.
Okay, but it wasn't put in there?
No, it was.
Okay. I'm still not, I'm, okay, so, again, I guess, I, I, I need to know, I mean, I would like to know, uh, of that thirty-one eight, what part of that is, belongs to executive, or what part of that belongs to, um, to the, um, administration, because that's like a fourteen thousand, three hundred.
Stewart, did you say something?
No, no. I am, I'm actually looking at the previous budget before we made the adjustment. And what I'm seeing here for special events, previously, we only had, um, ten thousand dollars. So, um, taking the amount from the executive to the administrative department, we're talking about an additional twenty thousand.
Yeah, and, and so, the back-to-school described as extravaganza, that portion went to the legislative to combine with what, uh, council members, uh, Fareed and, uh, Guillaume is putting together. Um, the Harvest Day rewind is being coupled with what the police department is putting together. Um, and I think there was something, Mr. Herring, you, Councilman Herring corrected from wrong, that was, uh, geared towards, um, gives towards, uh,
I think it was the council.
Cancer awareness, and that's also been coupled with the legislative. So we're not having two of the same type of events, you know, you know, at the same time or around the same time. Um, and then the rest was moved to the administration, um, and, but now, now all we have to do with that thirty-one eight is now allocate that to specific events that they're going to have.
Yeah, I thought that thirty-one, I mean, okay, I remember the changes, um, but I thought that amount included, though, um, those events that were dispersed elsewhere. Also, um, I'm thinking that, um, those events are still being advertised or still planning on being, um, done by administration. I think she's, uh, going to a backpack or something. I mean, I don't know what you're saying, but if it's still being advertised, I mean, we, you know, how is that?
Oh, we can take the advertisement down, it's, it's, it's one, if the mayor would like to work with, uh, Councilwoman Guillaume and Councilwoman Fareed to just throw one back-to-school extravaganza, then that's, I mean, that's fine. Um, but it's only one extravaganza. And so if there are two being advertised, and, um, then one will have to come down.
Okay, and again, like I said, um, I understand the dispersment of the, I mean, putting them in different, um, offices, but was the money that was allocated for the, allocated for those particular events subtracted from that thirty-one eight?
Yes, yes, there was.
So what was the original, I, I can't?
No, what we actually done is we took her, the amount that she has in our budget and redistributed to the different departments, and what was remaining was, um, along with, um, what was remaining in the admin, left us with thirty-one thousand. So, uh, any amount she had before was reduced to, I think, twenty thousand, which is now added to the ten thousand that was in the, um, the admin to make it thirty-one thousand.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, oh, I'm sorry, was, are we done, Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Jones?
I'm sorry, uh, concerning the phone system, I do believe that it would be better for, uh, those phones to be taken out of each, uh, department's budget, the landlines, because even, um, maybe, uh, even with my landline, we don't pay long for the long-distance calls anymore, we only pay for overseas calls. We don't, uh, and I'm sure that the, the business end of, uh, does the same, they offer them the same thing, unless there's something else that they offered, it's something that Mr. Stewart can find out, what kind of, what, what, what kind of plan are we on? What does it offer? I, I don't believe nowadays, uh, long-distance service, uh, when I call Baltimore, call anywhere else in the country, uh, you're not charged for long, long-distance service any longer, uh, uh, call by call, they don't do that. Um, and now, years ago, they did have a And now, years ago, they did have a system called Message Business System, where every, in fact, the city of Glen Arden had it. Cause I remember when I was a um summer help employee helping in the uh. Glen Arden Housing Authority with Ms. Godfrey, she had message service where she was, they were charging them five cent a call. Every call that was made out of there, but that was something that the city set up for her particular phone to have that. They don't, I don't think they have message business service anymore where they charge you for that. Everything now is just going through the system, you know, um. But like I said, we can check with Verizon, and I believe that if Mr. Stewart takes all of that out, all of those figures out. Because I don't believe one department is doing sixty five thousand dollars worth of phone service. So if he takes all of that out and starts gauging to see what what it really is, and then. Has a sit down with, maybe if he, if he, you know, once he looks at the plan. And then have a sit down with Verizon to find out what it is actually, the city, what kind of plan the city of Glen Arden is on. Then it would be better explained to us as legislators for that uh portion of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other uh question, council members? Here and now, we'll move on to. I'm sorry. Use myself.
So we're going to the cable department because that too had some adjustment, which is. Um the equipment that was taken from um the. Executive department, which I think was some cameras and so on, um we got. An estimate of 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 how much they may cost, so we moved that to the. Um the cable department. What we left there was amounts to procure um computers. Computer for the executive um office.
Oh, okay. Mayor Cross, I see your hand, uh but I'm going to reserve this time for council members to get through the changes that we recommended with the last meeting. Um. So we can get through it in a timely fashion. Are there any?
But Council President, I think my comments are relevant to the discussion at hand. Because polar expressed.
One, one second, um. So. What we're doing here is we're going through the budget to make sure that all the changes that we recommended are in the budget. Um now, I know that you have comments related to whether you think something is fair or not fair, or whether it's, you know, and. You can work with Mr. Stewart to identify those events in administrative budget, that's fine. Um but if you don't have any questions, well, actually, this meeting is for the council members to ask questions. Uh and verify that what the change, the changes that we suggested, the council suggested have been implemented. Um.
Mm-hmm, and there was a question relevant to events that came out of the executive branch, which I believe the mayor, as the executive. Should have an opportunity to have feedback, particularly for the questions that came from Councilwoman Ferguson. Uh relative to the special events and the budget as well.
I I welcome any, I welcome your response to any question council members have.
Excellent.
Vice Pres- Vice President Ferguson, do you have a question for Mayor Cross?
Uh she's already asked a question.
Mayor Cross, Mayor Cross, please. Vice President Ferguson, do you have a question for Mayor Cross? If so, she can respond.
No, I asked the um. Treasurer, uh I don't have a problem with her talking, but that's on you.
Is is there a question?
I don't have a direct question, um.
Okay, so we're gonna move on.
But she says she didn't have a problem with me talking, so I'm not.
Mayor Cross. Please interrupt. I'm conducting this meeting, we're gonna move on. Please, if I call you, then you can unmute yourself, then you can speak. If not, please do not unmute yourself to speak or interrupt me. Thank you. Any questions from the council on the cable department?
Yeah, this president.
Councilman Harry.
Don't hear the daybound computers for, out of cable for who?
Uh no, sorry about that, if if I could, no, um the amounts. Um that was in the executive department included camera, um they needed a camera as well. Um so what we actually did is move. That amount that we, I think we got an estimate as to how much it would be. And we put that to the cable department and left the computer cost in the uh the executive department.
Okay, alright.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
So I think I see the camera down there under equipment, you gotta scroll up a little bit. Under support equipment, cameras for, cameras for, well, the cameras for all departments to you, to to utilize. If we uh request for Mr. Gray to come in and do pictures, it's not just gonna be. Or or will the webmaster be taking pictures also?
Um it's would be the webmaster, or if we actually can get a photographer in. For, you know, certain events, um that's what it's mainly for.
Alright, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, context, I did see uh Mario Cross's hand, so for context, this is a work session. The council does work sessions so that we can work uninterrupted to get through an agenda item that we need to get through. Uh in in this case, legislative budget. Um yeah, we welcome any comment from citizens at our regular session or public hearing that's related to, in this case, the budget. Uh there will be another meeting on Thursday, July the sixth, where you have another opportunity to speak uh on the budget. Um but this is a work session, and this is not the form for. Uh and this is just, is specifically geared for. Making sure that what the council, you know, demanded last time as relates to the budget. Is now implemented in the budget. We're not looking for debate between the executive office or anybody else. If the council so chooses to ask anyone a question, then that person has a right to answer. Outside of that, we're gonna keep the meeting going, because we also have to get to a closed session here. Uh as relates to the salary component of this, so there's, you know. Welcome you to come out to the regular session if you have questions, if you agree, if you disagree, it is your voice, please make your voices heard. But right now is is a work session for the council to work through the budget, so thank you. Alright, moving on, Mr. Stewart, what is next?
The next is page thirteen, and that's the legislative. Now, I should note that um. You know, one of the changes were salaries, so each department that had salary made adjustments to all. Department with salaries, um communication as well has moved um to the general operations. And special, and we made some adjustment to account for um certain changes like. Um we separated the community outreach. Um as was requested by um Councilwoman Fareed and gave that a specific line. Um taking it away from the Glen Arden Day because both were together. Uh she wants to make it very clear that um that ten thousand is. You know, definitely for that project, and um we should not go near it. Okay, so we'll follow up with with that. I'll make sure that that fund is um is properly monitored. Um so those are the changes in legislative.
Okay, um I I, well, I see a few, I saw uh Councilman Herring unmute first, I will go to him first.
Yes, I have a problem with the community outreach being designated for one thing, because the community outreach originally was designated for. When we wanted to send out flyers or something else, also to citizens, letting them know what's what, that. One council member cannot simply say, I want that one line designated for them themselves, or for whatever they want. Again, like originally, the community outreach was for when we would send out postcards, send out flyers, we're announcing different events coming up. So I wanna know exactly wh- where is that, because there may be some, I may wanna have a public forum, and I wanted to mail out flyers or postcards to. My constituents to have a public forum. That's originally what the community outreach line was for, so to sit there and have one person designated for themselves. That's not, I don't agree with that. So either you're gonna need to break it out again, and have a community outreach line for the rest of the council, and then have a strict, a straight line, whatever grant program that's supposed to be. That they're they're trying to pay out of that. I think you need to say exactly what it's for. Community outreach could be anything, because if I see community outreach, I'm gonna use it. I ain't gonna sit there and say, I can't, because it's the council's budget, not a council member's budget. You know, because originally, because I was the one that actually originally put it in the budget before anybody else came on here, and that's exactly what we put it in there for. For when we have community forms or 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 mailings and things like that, so that we could reach out, reach our constituents, you know, if we have an event. So that needs to be talked about, and it needs to be either broken out, which whatever, whatever it's supposed to be for, whatever they think it's gonna be for. But that's not what the original intention is, and I don't think it's right to have that sit there like that. And it can be utilized only by one council person for one program, that. And that was not the original intent of the community outreach, my thing is, li- list out what it actually, what what they actually gonna do with the money that they had. That's what I think you need to do, if it's what I, what I give out to the track club or whatever, that needs to be listed in here, so people can see what's given, what's being given out. If it's for the grant program, then it needs to be put in there for a grant program, it should be a separate line item. For ten thousand dollars for that program alone. And leave the community outreach there for council members who wanna do mailings, or wanna have public forums, or need extra money for something like that. Um thank you.
Okay, so um, Mr. President, can I answer that?
Uh sure.
Okay, so the amount that is stated, uh that is there for Glen Arden Day still remain the same, it's thirty five thousand, hasn't changed. Um the community outreach is the only amount that has increased, but as you said, if we are going to um. Be using or making mailers or flyers. Uh I think um the the line mailers could be used for that purpose um. At at the bottom, so if you scroll down to the bottom, Mr. President, you will see um general expense, and it says mailers. So for that would use to do most of our um, you know, communication with um.
Not enough.
Community. And 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 that's only for the legislative.
It's not enough.
I'm sorry, Councilman Harry, what'd you say?
I said it's not enough. Five thousand dollars is not enough for seven council members to do mailers if they wanna do mailers. It's not enough.
And what would you suggest?
I would suggest ten thousand, like at the top.
So increase it to ten, increase it by five thousand.
And I still think the community outreach should be, what is it, so what is exactly this community outreach supposed to be for?
Uh well, I love it. I'm sorry, I'll let uh Councilwoman Fareed uh jump in here. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So to be clear, I have asked for. The line items to specifically refer to the recreation. Support and grant program for that to be ten thousand dollars. Prior to. The line item said, community outreach slash Glen Arden Day, and the amount was thirty five thousand dollars. That means that there actually was no amount allocated for community outreach, because thirty five thousand dollars is the budget for Glen Arden Day. So I agree that community outreach should be separated, it should have its own amount allocated to it. As well as there being a line that is specifically for youth recreation support. A grant for ten thousand dollars. The community outreach line item, again, should have its own distinct amount and not be. Connected to another event, so that if there is a need for the council to. Do community outreach, there will be funds available for that.
Councilman Harry, does that answer your question?
Yeah, but I'm I'm, but how did he get to this? I mean, I mean. I mean, that's because that's not the explanation of the treasurer game, it's just that. So now we got, so we need, that needs to be corrected.
Yeah, yeah, and 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 I think that's what she was highlighting, that it it should have been corrected in this budget. And I think Mr. Stewart, if you can get that adjusted, that'll be great. Um and Councilman Harry, and you correct me if I'm wrong, what you were talking about was the community outreach is related to getting flyers out for different things. Which we are increasing to ten thousand dollars, correct?
Yeah, community, I was, when originally, I don't even know how I got co-mingle with Glen Arden Day, because it never was co-mingle before, it was always separate. And so I don't know how I got co-mingle with that, um but the basic, the basic premise of community outreach is that, I mean. We have, I mean, we have seven council members. Each council member should be able to touch their constituents in any way, if they wanna have an event, if they wanna have. A public forum, and they might wanna provide some refreshments or something, they wanna do a mailing. That money should be there, that's what the, technically, that's what the money was originally slated for, for community outreach. That's what it was, so.
Alright.
You know, so I mean, I still would increase the mailing too, but it needs to be broken out, another line need to be added for the grant program in that, in that, in our budget.
Yeah. Okay, agreed. Um Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah, okay, um. Question for uh Councilman Herring. Um shred day, you have two shred days, so two thousand dollars, I mean, twenty five hundred dollars is enough for two shred days.
Actually, that's entirely too much. Each shred day is only seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh uh correct me from uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh council clerk, but it's seven fifty, right, for each shred?
That's correct.
And then you uh buy a little uh some refreshment or something?
No, I pay for that out of my pocket.
Oh, okay, so that need to be, that need to be adjusted?
That can be actually taken down.
Oh.
I mean, I don't, I don't know if the price can go up, so I'm I'm.
I I didn't know, I was just wondering, because I know it's two, so and then um. The Hill City events, I um. We took it down to uh by three thousand dollars, I don't remember that.
So, do we do?
Hill City um events was a plural. Um it was seven thousand, I I mean, um. And they took it to four thousand, um I don't remember that. Been spoken about. Who did that?
Yeah, I I think that's on a basis, do we have the Hill City event uh this year?
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't, but the Hill City was taken down to by three thousand, so that we could put that money into the cancer awareness. I thought that's what I heard. Cancer, uh well, Awareness Day.
Is that what it was?
Yes, that's what it was.
Okay, that's fine. Um four thousand, so that would be. Yeah, we were talking about having some events to um this time. So. Alright.
Alright, uh Councilman Jones?
Uh yes, question for uh the uh Mr. Stewart. Uh how much does the council spend in mailers? I mean, I probably wouldn't know offhand, but because it's not been asked you before. But have we spent uh and in the in the legislative office, spent a lot of money in mailers? I know we mail out for for the shred day, for the expungement fair, um. Maybe we'll probably mail out for the back to school. Maybe we'll probably mail out for the back to school event. Because I, but I think I did see something last year for that. Mailer go out for Glenn Arden Day. And mailers go out for the Christmas party, but but do you have an idea, estimate of how much the council spends in mailers?
Um, that, I don't have a straight figure, but. Um, most of the mailers are sometime over seven hundred dollars. Um, the last bill I saw was over seven hundred dollars. Um, so it it can be, I have to sum as, as Mr. Herring.
Okay, seven times eight would be like fifty six hundred dollars. Yeah, so maybe, yeah, okay, if you increase that. To ten thousand, that that'll cover the mailers for the uh, event, but. Is uh, if community outreach and and Glenn Arden Day were connected on the budget before. I can pull a previous budget to find out. Um, and then community outreach, Glenn Arden Day, community outreach. I'm saying that that can be separated. And community outreach can be an actual community outreach like what Councilwoman Fareed is doing. I don't see that that needs to be changed. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, thank you. So my question is for the back to school event, um. Mr. Stewart, I, I saw that the amount increased. Is that increase due to um, allocating the funds that were previously part of the executive? Um, back to school event?
Exactly, um, we actually moved um, fifteen hundred from the um. The executive to the. Um, the exec, to the legislative.
You take fifteen hundred to five thousand.
Okay, so what I can remember in the discussion on the first meeting is that. Um, there were going to be more work or more done. On the back to school, so we had increased it. And then the amount that was there for the back to school. On the executive side, we brought that over to add to what was there.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, let me be more um, clear on my question. What was the amount that was added? From the executive budget for the back to school event? Are you thinking it was fifteen hundred? That was all that was allocated? On the executive side, okay. And then um, as it relates to the um. The vaccine clinic at the back to school event, um, I did not see that in the R section, which is where we sent the funding for that particular portion would be um. Allocated from uh, Pro or R thirty four.
No, that was not included. Yes, you're right.
Somebody likes to make sure that that amount is, I don't remember the amount that I estimated that I gave you, but um, whatever that amount was.
Yes, and I think that, that, sorry if you don't mind, but I think that was, you see, we, we didn't know exactly. How much it was and um, we were searching for that information, so that to.
Yeah, I said that over a couple of weeks ago. I said that over a couple of weeks ago. I, I got the estimated cost per child for vaccination that are required for. School, um, and so it's a little of an overestimate because we would not anticipate that anyone that would be. Coming against vaccines would be all up there, you know, shock. That would be an unlikely scenario.
Let's see. So for that amount, we would let us convene and um. You know, increase the amount for the back to school because we did move it up by um. I think four thousand dollars and then the fifteen hundred brought it to sixty five hundred, um. So that could be, but let's convene and clarify.
Yeah, because what I'm just trying to make sure that we're clear on is that the amount is here in the legislative budget. For back to school is not paying for vaccines. Right? That money is coming, that vaccine money specifically is coming from our.
Yes.
The money that is in the back. Will be for the other um, activities that will be taking place that day that we would keep funding for.
Got it.
I did not see um, community garden. I know that previously when we discussed it, it was possibly going under. Administration, I'm not really partial to where it goes. It just needs to go in there and the estimates were um. Uh, provided, to be provided by the systems that you had done some rough estimates around how much of the process is spending in the end for the different blocks.
Okay, so we'll reach out to Mr. Simpson and get that number and do the adjustment.
Okay, um, and um, just. As I'm going through my list, um, the farmer's market, I see that in there. It looks good, thank you. However, on the summary pages. You know, before I get to the detailed breakdown, the summary of the expenditures for the farmer's market is twenty thousand five hundred, but the line says supplies and uniforms. So we just want to update that line, so it's not confusing for people.
Yes.
Okay.
That, that was my. That was my boo-boo. It should be total, total expenditure.
Okay, and I think that, that's all my comments, but correct me if I'm wrong, Councilor, I know I said some overuse, but I would not be able to kind of.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, um, uh, Vice President Ferguson, is that a new hand or does she have another comment?
Hey, I have another question. Um, I'm back with the Hill City. Okay, so it looks like three thousand was taken away. I don't have a problem with it, um, going to the uh. Breast cancer awareness, however, it looks like eighteen hundred was um. Uh, added to their. Um, budget. So if we took three thousand away, where is the, what is the twelve hundred go? It's the three thousand away um, from Hill City and you only put eighteen hundred. In uh, the breast cancer, so it should be twelve hundred dollars. Where was that dispersed?
Well, the breast cancer, um, it wasn't in the budget last year. So. It wasn't in the budget last year and we're looking at last year's numbers. Um, I think what we had done is paid for it through the Hill City.
No, um, I think it was paid for left, I, I, I suggested that they could do that, but I think of it. Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Councilman Herring, I think they had left over money from Glenn Arden Day.
Yeah, we had five thousand dollars left over.
That eighteen hundred that you're seeing for the breast cancer awareness, um, I think that was another. Um, error in the sense that I may have copied the shred day. And inserted the um, breast cancer and didn't take out the two thousand, so. Breast cancer actually got thirty eight hundred, not, and a difference of eighteen hundred. So that two thousand that you see there for twenty twenty three, um. That shouldn't have been there. So thanks for bringing that to my attention.
So you're saying that, so you're confirming that the three, the entire three thousand went to the breast cancer because. There was no budget there for the um, which I do know that it wasn't. So, um. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright.
Mr. President?
Uh, I'm sorry about that, Councilman Harry.
Yeah, I would, I, I really think that the Hill City should be restored to, to its nominal, its normal amount. Because we, we're looking at costs from a couple of years back. Everything has gone up. You know, and I think that it should be restored back to the seven thousand dollar level. Because either we can have one night, somebody can go meet, normally we do two. One, I think, Mr. President, correct me if I'm wrong, did we do one in the spring and one in the fall or something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it should be restored back to what it was, uh, seven thousand dollars.
We're gonna have two in twenty twenty four?
So we've been, I mean, some different things have come up, so um. Um, whether it's something with mental health or whatever, it's still Hill City has something to do. Hill City is basically about health. So, um, it is possible that we will have two.
Are there any, any objections? Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna summarize, I'm sorry, Councilman Harry, were you finished? I just want to summarize this so we can get this section right. Alright, so, um. The changes in the special events section is that we're restoring Hill City to seven thousand dollars. Uh, the only other change is that we are, um. Relabeling the existing community outreach to the. I forgot what it was, Councilwoman Fareed, the um. The event that uh, Councilwoman Fareed talked about, that's for ten thousand dollars. And that we want to have a separate line for community outreach, but we have not identified what that outreach would be. Nor uh, a cost associated with, associated with that outreach. Uh, the only other change was increasing the mailers from fifty eight hundred to ten thousand. Alright.
Yes.
Uh, so I'll just go back to Councilman Herring for specifically. When Dean separates the community outreach, was there a specific number that should go with community outreach? Councilman Harry?
Yeah, um. If, if you're gonna put the mail, because basically it was for mailings and everything else, if you're gonna put the mailers. Put five thousand dollars in mailers, I would have, I would put five thousand dollars in community outreach. Normally what it takes, it comes this amount of cost, it costs about, like the treasurer said, over seven hundred and something dollars for postcards. If we do, we outsource flyers, it's eleven hundred dollars to mail out flyers and that's for printing and mailing. So depending on, and I know we do a mailing, we do flyers for. The Christmas party, we do flyers for the, you know, so I'm looking at that.
So all we're doing is just increasing the mailers section for the community outreach portion.
You're gonna increase the mailers, either one, you need, that, that, that needs to be in place. But also, but also I think it should be something for community outreach because again, a council member may want to have. A public forum and they may even need to buy supplies, they may need to have additional printing, they may need, you know. May want to have some refreshments, you know, water or something. So I, I think that should be there in case, you know. I mean, the seven of us, so it, it, I mean, at least a thousand dollars, at least seven thousand dollars. Not saying, you know, we, we use it, but at least there's something there, enough there for, you know, an event. So.
Yeah. Alright, Councilwoman Fareed and then we'll close out with Councilman Dion.
Yes, I would recommend that for the mailers that we, we budget to be able to send mailers for every event. I know that that's been some of the feedback that we received. Um, that everyone's not knowing about all the events, so to ensure that that's not happening again. Um, I think we should plan to go ahead and do those mailers using the service that um. The Councilman Herring was speaking about it really is efficient and, and that. Um, to use that, and I think it, it helps us reach more people. So that there, so that at least, you know, these events that we're spending money on are well attended.
Okay. And, thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. And Councilwoman Dion.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say that I was um, was in agreement with what Councilman Herring had just suggested. I think. What happens, and and I understand that we get, you know, pigeon down to. The actual amount for each event, but midway through the year. Or even beginning part of the year, we may just come up with an idea and say, oh, we should have done this and I, and for our citizens, similar, I guess. Similar to what happened with the cancer event that Councilman Harrison and, and Councilman Herring did, that wasn't part of the original budget, but. They still, thank goodness, had money from leftover Glenn Arden Day. So I agree with what Councilman Herring said, it's having that additional line item of sorts or additional money set aside, so. We as council members, when we're doing our outreach, we can at least pull from that.
Okay, uh, uh, do, do you suggest an amount?
I believe, I, I don't recall if Councilman Herring has it a thousand each or something, I don't remember, I.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Thought that's what I heard.
I think, I, 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 thank you. Alright, so. Um. Mr. Stewart, did you get all that? So.
So that's seven thousand.
Mm-hmm.
A thousand for each.
And to accommodate. Count what I think both Councilwoman Fareed and Councilman Harry was saying, uh, if we are doing a. A mailer for each event, I don't think ten thousand dollars is going to cover it. Uh, not if it's, not if, you know, it's eleven hundred dollars per event and what I count here is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine uh, events. Uh, I'm sorry, ten, because it's two Hill, Hill Cities. So. Uh, Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, um, I would also make a suggestion, and if we're gonna do the community outreach for seven thousand because. Seven council members, I would actually um, say that it should be, we should look at like we do the miscellaneous and have it be a thousand per because. It's, if, if one council member comes up with some new event and. You know, it's not something that was already budgeted for in the mailers and they wanted to do a mailer for it as well as an event, that's gonna be over a thousand dollars. And then that might, you know, prohibit another council member from being able to do something. So I would just suggest that, you know, each council member have community outreach of a thousand dollars.
Any objections?
You know, council members can collaborate if needed, if they want to do, you know, an event. And it's gonna be mailers and, you know, just to make sure that. One event doesn't eat up the money.
Okay. And. Alright. So, that puts then, I think. The mailers at about uh, eleven thousand dollars. Mr. Stewart? Alright, is that off the legislative? Move it on. Mr. Stewart, what's the next page? I believe it's uh, finance, but I don't think there were any. Significant changes in here the last time we went through it, but did council members have any questions? Okay. Uh, the executive office, was there any questions or changes to the executive budget? Councilwoman Jones? You're on mute.
I'm sorry. So the membership, I'm tired. The membership induced um. Uh, section that we received the email concerning and uh, we're not gonna address, I mean, uh, that's not, it's not. In the, in this budget.
Uh, from my understanding, no, it is not in the budget.
Okay. So the one issue that I had, at this point, it doesn't even matter, alright, if it's not in the budget. Thank you.
I think the only thing was, uh, Mr. Stewart, it was. Outlining the membership for the twelve hundred.
Yes, so the membership and the um, conference and training, if you see the conference and training has five thousand dollars. Um. It's just to have that number broken down so that we know what it is. And then um, the membership induces is still at twelve hundred dollars, one thousand two hundred dollars.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Let me get some explanations from the mayor on some of these items in this budget, like. Why ICMA, why Mako, we're not a county officials, you know, why um. Yeah, why some of these events are even in the budget, World Conference of Mayors? I mean, can I get an explanation on some of those? And and also, yeah, I mean, the price, I mean, I can tell you, we're going to Mako and we're going to ICMA, I know it's gonna be. And, and also, yeah, I mean, the price, I mean, I can tell you, we're going to Mako and, or going to ICMA, I know it's gonna be more than some five thousand dollars, so. I mean, I just need an explanation on why, why those are even in there.
Okay, uh, Mayor Cross?
Thank you, Councilman Herring, for that question, and I'm, uh, glad that you asked that question. Twelve hundred dollars for conferences, won't even pay for the mayor to go to the summer conference for. MML, which is a Maryland Municipal League Conference, uh, honestly, uh, is. What's happening here is a travesty, the mayor represents a voting body in each of these particular conferences. Um, the twelve hundred dollars that you've pushed for conferences won't support. If you look at the Mako, the Maryland Association of Counties. Is a conference that allows all of us to understand what's happening across the various counties. In, um, in, in Maryland. And that is a very important piece because we understand broadbanding. We understand what's happening in the world of the boards of public works. We understand what types of technology changes are happening in other counties, which will eventually come towards us. Uh, it makes us more of a, of, of cutting edge city that is on the front line when it comes down to. The movements that are happening and not just waiting for things to, you know, hit us on the head, we're actually partners in it. Uh, when it comes down to ICMA, ICMA was formed in nineteen fourteen. It is the leading organization for local government professionals that are dedicated to creating and sustaining thriving communities throughout this world. It has over ten thousand members, and in the ICMA. It actually brings forth an opportunity for us to, uh, to talk to other local government leaders. As well as to understand how they are mobilizing their economy. And bringing mental health and wellness, race equity and social justice to the forefront. So these aren't just the, uh, opportunities for us to go and, and do nothing. We are learning and bringing back to our city the best practices that are learned in other cities. So each one of these, uh, are, are very necessary in helping Glenn Arden be the city on the move. Because we are also building a network of networks of people that are weaving a fabric of credible. Trainings, professional unparalleled leadership development networking, best in its class programming to the city of Glenn Arden. That's why those are important. The World Council of Mayors is a, is a formulated, um, organization that brings to the forefront. The knowledge of what's happening on the global scene. Things like, um, social justice, climate change, all those things that are impacting Glenn Arden, yes. I mean, just look at the, the right now, the wildfires that are happening in Canada is putting smog all the way here. And what will that do to the, the environment as a whole? So these are things that the World Council of Mayors talks about because it also looks at humanitarian issues and. Uh, events that are happening globally that helps Glenn Arden not to just be a small needle on a map. But a, 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 a person of interest when it comes down to world news, world change. And Ma- Ma- Maryland County as well as other local government partnerships. So each one of these are very valuable to the city of Glenn Arden, staying on the cutting edge and being the city on the move. Now, uh, the city of Glenn Arden has always been a part of these organizations, this ain't nothing new. Um, it just seems to be cut here in this budget, but there is no requirement for it to be cut, particularly with MML. If your mayor is not there, I am the voting body for your city. And without me being at Maryland Municipal League and effectively being able to represent. Uh, by the way, I did pay my way for Maryland Municipal League Summer because my budget was cut December to zero. So I've been paying my way this whole time, and I'll continue to serve the citizens of Glenn Arden the best I can, thank you.
Thank you, I just, uh, uh, Councilman Herring, does that answer your question?
Yes, I mean, she got explanation, but I do, I mean, I, I do wanna say, as long as I've been on this council, I don't ever remember. A mayor being a member of the World Conference of Mayors, I don't remember, I was paying for that membership. Or, um, ICMay, or Mako for that matter, for those conferences. Because ICMay is really for, it's that's International City Managers Association. So why is our mayor, well, I can see it, the, the, the city manager wanted to go, that's something, cuz he, you know, members of that organization. So, I mean, I, 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 I know for a fact, we never paid for any membership or any mayor that I've. Since I've been on this council, for Mako, for, um, World Conference of Mayors. Um. And I think there's another one on here, uh.
Councilman Williams. I thought.
Mayor Cross, Mayor Cross.
Not, well, like I said, I said, since I've been on this council. I don't know what they did before, but since I've been on this council, we took all of that out there cuz we realized it wasn't. Nothing was being brought back to the city in a way of information. And how it was benefiting the citizens in Glenn Arden, that's the whole premise of these meeting, of these conferences, that. Get information and try to bring back information to our citizens, but that's gonna improve the community, just like you said, but I don't see how those. Those organizations of being members of those organizations are gonna help, and also actually your conferences and training budget is actually five thousand dollars. Your membership is twelve hundred dollars. And even with that, you got a lot of memberships in here. World Association of Mayors, International Association of Administrative Professionals, um. Um, what's the GSA Professional Development Training for Support Staff, why is that in your budget? Um.
Thank you for that question.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Are you done, Councilman Herring?
Yes, and I answered to those questions too, thank you.
Alright, Mayor Cross.
I'm sorry, I was asking a question.
Listen to what I'm saying, please, do not open your, your mic to speak unless I address you. There's decency and order in these meetings, and you've interrupted several times. Please stop interrupting. I will come to you, Mr. Hare, Councilman Hare had a question, once he's finished, instead of you talking over him and jumping into the. Into his question, just let him finish asking his question, and then I'll come to you, and then you can answer the question. Mayor Cross, you have the floor to answer Mrs. Councilman Harry's question.
Uh, thank you so much, so, we, we've had an opportunity to look at each one of these budgets with the, the treasurer. I actually went and sat at his desk, so I'm not even sure why this budget is showing up the way it's showing up. Because I've provided a complete breakdown, uh, as well as he has it in email. So the, the, the reason why this keeps showing up this way, it seems darn near intentional, Councilman Herring, to tell the truth. Because I've sat down several times with the treasurer to clarify and codify those particular, uh, topics that you've just asked. The conferences, uh, what, um, memberships and dues are, so it, it's darn so intentional. But, you know, I'll be happy to send for the fifth time the document to the treasurer so that he can update this appropriately. Uh, as we side saddle and discuss, thank you so much.
And to be clear. The, we did reduce it to twelve hundred dollars and gave the time that, from that point to now, to identify what. The executive office would use that twelve hundred dollars on what memberships. So if you could, you know, provide the treasurer with what memberships you plan to participate, you know. In, with the twelve hundred dollars, that would be great, thank you. Um, Vice President Ferguson?
Okay, I think, um, with the membership and dues, for instance, I did mention last time. Um, about the training for support, support staff. Um. There should not, that should not be in the budget, because, um, there is no support staff in the budget. Of the executive office that needs to come out, this GSA, I don't, the cybersecurity, um, no, no. Not that one, I'm the GSA, I don't know what that is, I do, um, concur with, um. Councilman Herring, I have never seen, um, Mako or, um. ICM, and definitely ICM, um, MA. The other thing I have a problem with is, um. And the conferencing is, um, I, I, I'm not understanding why all these mayor, um. Uh. No, it's just that dues, the membership, um, membership to, um, so many mayor associations. Um, the A- Association of Administrative Professional. That, that should come out, I don't even know why that's in there, um, administrative professional is, um. Not something that, um, I, I think the mayor should be a, a membership of. Because that's not her role, uh, 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 administrative, uh, professional. Is, is, is what it says, so that needs to come out, whatever the cost that is, anything administrative, anything that's, uh, supporting, um. The, uh, the staff, training, absolutely needs to come out.
Sure.
And, and also, um, um. When, um, the mayor shared exactly what, uh, Mako does, and then the other, um, organizations, um, do, um. That's, if, you know, it's good and everything, but, uh, we don't, um, I don't see where that's brought back to the city. And also, um, with, um, networking with mayors. Um, tha- that can be discussed as well, so I don't, I don't, um, I really think the Mako should come out, um. As well as ICMA, and definitely Association of Administrative Pro- Professional, that shouldn't even be in there.
Yeah, thank you, and, 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 okay, thanks, and so with the next iteration. When we vote on the budget, we should have an itemized of what the twelve hundred dollars is for. Uh, Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you, Council President. I just have, um, some comments, actually, not, not a question, right? So, I, first thing I do wanna say is, and I did hear, um. What the mayor's initial response was to Councilman Herring's question about what all of these, um. Conferences and trainings and, and things of the such were. And so for me, I do agree, this is, I may be on an island here, I do agree. That a mayor should be able to attend these events, I, I, or, or conferences, I, and even trainings. I, I, I don't necessarily fall on the, because a prior mayor or mayors didn't do it, then. A current mayor shouldn't do it, because I feel that we should always be evolving, right? So, so I, I do wanna say that. As, and, as a legislator, you know, I'm speaking for myself, as a legislator. I am tasked right now to not just look at the budget and assess the expenses, but also look at. What's making up these expenses, and. Do I actually feel like something is gonna come of the person who is putting this on the budget for them to utilize? So, in, in other words, it's about trust. And I can say that while I feel the way I feel about a mayor being able to go to all of these different conferences and trainings. What I have experienced with the current administration is no trust. And I do not trust that the current executive is going to utilize these opportunities to benefit the city. I myself just went to MML, and I can't speak for other council members or legislators on this call. But I was fielding so many unnecessary and frivolous rumors that came out of the executive office. When it should have been about building up Glenn Arden, not bringing Glenn Arden down. So I can't necessarily support. Having an executive have a budget to go to all of these places. Utilizing the city's dollars to make Glenn Arden not be the Glenn Arden that it's supposed to be. So, that's one. The second part of this also, as far as the budget is concerned. There are also frivolous expenses, serious expenses, excuse me, that we. On the legislative side have had to incur, incur from attorneys because of frivolous things. Malicious things actually coming from the executive office. So when I'm looking at this budget from the executive side, and I'm seeing a request for dollars. For this, and it pressed the dollars for that, for conference and training and membership and dues, I. Cannot rationally wrap my head around that, because I still know that there are expenses. That the city has had to incur, the legislative body specifically, or folks in the legislative body had, has had to incur. Because of unnecessary things coming from the executive office, so I just wanted to go on record and say that. With that being said, I do agree, uh, with what the recommendations. Were, what, whatever, I don't wanna go line by line out, but what the recommendations were from Council Vice President, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gill, is that a new hand, Council, Vice President Ferguson?
I'm sorry, no.
Um, so I, yeah, I just wanna concur, uh, with, uh, Councilwoman Gill. I think a mayor, uh, should be able to go to conferences, uh, and participate in things like that. Um, we have, I, I think all council members have five thousand dollars towards a conference expense to pick and choose what conference. They would like to go to that could bring something substantial back to the city. Uh, for example, uh, I was at MML, uh, and participated in several, uh, workshops. As it relates to, uh, Annexation and Public Information Act and things like that, that. I plan to, you know, bring back to the city and to help the city. Um, but it does come down to, um, you know, being financial stewards of. The city, uh, and where we want to allocate funds to, um, you know. Uh, what my experience has been in the past two years. Is that there just hasn't been enough accountability from the executive office to, uh, you know. Uh, fund some of the things that are being requested. Um, and because of that, I know that this was mentioned, that the budget was, uh, taken away, um. Uh, last year, in midway through the year, uh, but that was the reason why, there was no accountability, and there's other malicious things being. That have come out of the executive office, which then.
I beg your pardon, you need to stop.
After several attempts to.
Stop.
Communicate.
Defamatory.
Cross, Mayor Cross.
Defamatory.
Mayor Cross, if you interrupt again, I'm gonna have to remove you from the meeting, so please do not interrupt. If you have anything to say, you are welcome to go on your platform to say anything that you want to say. But this is a work session for council members, and we're having a discussion right now. Thank you, if you interrupt again, I won't like it, but I will have to remove you because I've, I've been patient with you. I've asked you several times not to interrupt. Whether you agree or disagree, that's fine, but some council members may agree or disagree with what I'm saying, but they're waiting patiently for their turn to speak. I expect the same thing from you, please, thank you. Uh, so, as I was saying, um. I concur with Councilwoman Gill, uh, you know, there's just, it's just been too tough to try to. Um, you know, hold the executive office accountable for spending. Uh, the treasurer's tried, tried several times, I know that the, uh, I believe the attorney has reached out. Um, and we've done everything we can to. Uh, to assist the mayor with tracking different things, so, so that we can build a, a better Glenn Arden. But I, I just feel uncomfortable with, with increasing anything for the executive office with no, uh, type of, um, checks and balances. So with that being said, are there any other comments from the council? Alright. Councilman Herring, did you have everything that you needed?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Alright. Thank you. Moving on, if there are no more comments or questions, uh, uh, Shutter Stewart, the only thing in here is. It looks like that we are going to define what this twelve hundred dollars is, we're going to, um. Looks like we're gonna clean up the conferences and training as well. We're going to um, looks like we're going to clean up the conferences and training as well. Public safety. Were there any other questions or comments on public safety? All right. Code enforcement, any other comments or questions? Okay. Public works. Any other comments or questions from the council? General operations.
Yeah, I got something for general operations. Um.
Councilman Herring.
I've been thinking um long and hard on this. And I'm thinking that we need, oh, let me ask the treasurer a question first before I I get into that. So Mr. Stewart, could you tell me exactly how much do we have? How much are we moving to savings? Because I know you told me before, but I I don't remember.
Sorry, I was unmuted. You mean taking um.
Moving to the.
Some of the reserves.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Um, so seventy seventy percent of what's in the bank account will be moved to the um, the the investment pool, the Maryland investment pool. This is.
That's about what I mean.
It's approximately eight million dollars.
And that does not include opperman.
No, no.
Okay. And let me ask a question. How many, this is about how many households in in the state of Glen Arden that pay property taxes? About twenty, is it like twenty-one hundred, two thousand, something like that, nineteen?
Yes, it's a wrong twenty-one hundred.
Yeah, about twenty-one hundred. Okay. So I I I'm feeling this way, you know, we've we've been talking about the legacy of Glen Arden and legacy of legacy organizations and everything in Glen Arden, and I've been in Glen Arden all my life and I watched the citizens in this community build this community up to where it is now. They sacrifice day in, day out. They pay their property taxes um religiously every year. Um. I'm honestly believe that this the citizens in this community with that kind of money sitting in the bank is due uh tax rebate. And I think that we should give each citizen, each household that pays their tax, that pay their taxes in this year a five hundred dollar rebate. And that's about one point, one point something million dollars that I'm asking that we set aside to give citizens in this community a five hundred dollar who pay their property taxes, a five hundred dollar rebate. Um, you know, citizens are always asking me, what are you going to do about the taxes? The taxes are high. A lot of my students got caught in that 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 little stunt that the state of Maryland played when they required them to file their home state tax credit application and if they didn't, then their taxes went up, they didn't get, went up to, they just bought the house, so they're paying like four or five thousand dollars where they really should be paying only twenty-five hundred. And they're hurt, you know, and I just think that with that kind of money, we can take that kind of money. We could take um. Let's see, um. Let's see, so. Yeah, about one point one, one point two million dollars, set it aside and issue rebates to the citizens in this community. Um, because that's a true legacy of this community. Everyone, every citizen, every council member, every mayor that came before that built the city up and we're sitting on this money and I think it's time for it to be allocated out. And I'm telling you, it wasn't, I mean, I thought a long and hard about it because I'm not one to want to spend money, give anybody any money back and put it into the community. But I think this is one time where we really need to show the citizens that we as a council are looking out for their best welfare. So my thing is we we have all these other programs that we're issuing grants to other people. I think we should ensure to our own people in this community by issuing these five hundred dollar grant, I mean rebates in property taxes for homeowners in this community who really built up the community through their, through their money, with their tax dollars and with their money, so. Um, I would like to see that incorporated in that general operating budget. Thanks.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you, Council President.
Go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
Uh, I I didn't want to uh move on from what Councilman Herring presented. So I wanted to give council members opportunity to discuss it because it's, I know it's very new for me. Um, so I I know you have a um a question, but I didn't just want to dismiss his 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 comment, so.
So I actually don't have a question, Council President. Um, I wanted to say that Councilman Herring is speaking to my part of the world and and so it brings me joy. And I was just, I was just going to say that if it is doable, because like you, Council President, I haven't looked at the numbers yet to even think about that. But if it is something that is doable, I will definitely be in support of that, hoping that it is doable. Because again, I haven't looked at all the numbers to address or even entertain that. So if it is, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Gill. Councilman Fareed.
Yes, thank you. Um, and thank you, Councilman Herring, for the suggestion. I would um want to look, I don't know, even for myself, honestly, I don't know what my annual property taxes are. So I don't know what proportion that five hundred dollars makes up. And I do also know that not everyone pays the same amount of property taxes. So I don't know if we should be looking at giving back a percentage of property taxes as a rebate versus a fixed dollar amount. And, you know, I don't know if, uh, again, I don't, even though my own property taxes, like, I don't know if five hundred dollars would be all that I paid in property taxes, I doubt it. Or if it, you know, if it's like one percent of what I've paid. I think that would be helpful so that we can know, you know, um, how great of an impact we're making and especially making it proportional, particularly, um, you know, as you stated, to those who have kind of invested. And so therefore that will be reflected in their property values and their resulting um property taxes. And um, so that would be my suggestion is that we just look at doing it as a percentage rather than a fixed dollar amount. But I also, you know, don't know, you know, how you arrived at the five hundred dollars. Um, basically, I would like to just kind of look at this more um and not make a decision on it right now, as you know, as part of the budget, but rather we go through the, you know, our typical process of going through a resolution, work session, et cetera, discussing it so that we can have um a correct amount to be put aside.
A question for you, Councilman Fareed. So what I'm hearing is that you are in agreement, you just don't have an idea of what the structure should be. So are you opposed to earmarking um a a line item to include in the budget? For discussion, resolution, is something we'll work through to provide a final um uh product?
So my only hesitation would be that if we, if we did that now and put a line item in this budget and then we pass the budget, but then when we do a further exercise, we find that it should be more, what would be the process then? I mean, I guess in either case, we would need to kind of do, there would need to probably be some sort of amendment to whatever we're doing here now if we don't know that amount. So I guess I would just rather get the amount that we need and then put that forward.
Okay.
You know, the same fun. Yeah, I definitely agree where the money should come from and that we should give some money. It's just the amount that I'm not sure about.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed, for the clarification. Um, Councilwoman Jones.
I agree with Councilwoman Fareed. I think we need more information on how this is going to be structured, how it will be done um before we uh make a determination in this year's budget. Maybe that's something that we can address in next year's budget and until we get all of the information together to determine, you know, how it's going to be structured and how much money is going to uh be presented.
They make abortion their hobby. To curse animals.
All right. Uh, Ms. Smallwood, I you've now been off mute a couple of times. Could you please keep your uh your uh equipment on mute, please? Thank you. Councilman Hairston.
Oops. I just wanted to say that I concur with um Councilwoman Gill and Councilman Hare. That's all.
Uh, thank you, sir. Um, I I'm in.
And also, one more thing, I'm sorry, now I would like to say that I think this really will help um the citizens in Glen Arden, for sure. And I think they definitely appreciate.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and Councilwoman Fareed, I don't know if that's a new hand or old hand. Is that a new hand?
It it's a new hand. I just wanted to um, you know, say, I think we can do it in this year's budget. I don't know that we necessarily need to wait till next year's budget, but um I think we can do it in this year's budget with an amendment once we know the amount.
Okay. Um. Okay. So. I guess we could do it because where we go from here. Councilman Hare, are you opposed to uh leading the groundwork to put together a robust plan and us addressing it in um to amend the the budget in twenty twenty-four once we get this passed?
Let me say this, 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 why I picked the five hundred dollars, because again, I, the average person in Glen Arden is paying probably about twenty-five hundred dollars in property taxes. Of course, open Wilmore, you're gonna be paying much more. I mean, one of my neighbors over here actually pays forty-five hundred dollars for a house valued at, was it three something? In property taxes, you know, so I'm not, I mean, it's it, one thing I don't want to do is overburden the treasurer with figuring out calculations and all of this stuff. Your houses, you pay this much, as you should get this much percentage. My thing is taking a a pot of money and equally distributed amongst all the households. Each house, that's that's the simplest way to do it. You know, you, some may pay more, some may pay less, but at least you're getting something back. And I think just a a flat rate of five hundred dollars, I feel is um, is something. You know, no, I mean, I mean, some people may pay more than, like I say, some people may pay less. Um, but again, five hundred dollars goes a long way to paying for prescription, paying some bills and doing some other things. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel here when it's just a matter of taking a pot of money and divvying them out equally across the board. Everybody get a little bit of something because you're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to be fair to everybody. And to sit there and ask the treasurer to pull everybody's tax bills, see how much they paid and give them a a a a rebate in proportion to what they paid, you know, because I mean, you can look at, I could say, okay, well, I've been in my house for over fifteen years and I've been paying taxes for fifteen years and I paid over you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in property taxes. I should get more, you know, and I don't, I don't feel I should get no more than anybody else. I think five hundred dollars or any other, anybody else would, you know, it would should be, it's it's just a nice amount of money. I just think that it's a nice gesture for us to give to our citizens. And like I said, everybody gets the same amount no matter what. Um, you know, uh, you pay. It's something that, because everybody's paying property taxes, nobody's not paying it, and everybody's paying way more than five hundred dollars. I think that, like I said, again, the minimum amount, and that's under the home state tax credit is about twenty-five hundred. I know that's what I paid for both my houses, twenty-five hundred apiece, but no, for one, I pay five, the other one, I pay twenty-five hundred, you know. So um, you know, because one has the home test, home state tax credit, others don't, you know, people who bought newer homes and I get the same benefit under the home state tax credit as some of people in the older homes. But people in the older homes have been living in a log and paying more to the pot. But I don't think they should be getting more than somebody who just bought a house, they should be getting the same amount, you know, I think everybody should get the same amount. Like I say, take a a pot of money, one point one million dollars, that's what it's going to be about, and just divvy it up amongst a number of households, if they pay their property taxes. If they didn't pay their property taxes, you may want to look at that, but you know, if you paid your property taxes, then give them, you know, just give it out, so. I mean, because I don't think it's really that difficult to do. I think that's the easiest way to do it and the fairest way to do it. Because I don't think once we start trying to decide, you paid this, you paid that, you paid, you've been here this long, you've been here that long, you get into a whole lot of mess, you know, people are, you know, everybody getting the same, everybody getting this when they, when I'm getting this and all of this other stuff. You know, it's almost like, you know, a a kid and 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 a torch, so everybody gonna get a red sock, I don't even pick a flame. Y'all gonna get the same thing because I don't want to hear, you know. So, I mean, that's where I feel about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Councilman Hairston, is that a new hand or old hand? Councilman Hairston.
No, I'm sorry, let me go.
Okay, all right. Council, Vice President Ferguson.
I just wanted to say that I concur with um Councilman Herring, um, five hundred dollars, um. Is the, is a nice gesture. Um, I do understand um that people probably pay, I mean, their taxes vary. But I mean, it's something that that um no taxpayer would have, would have had. This is a gift. I mean, um, just five hundred dollars flat. Um, or whether five hundred, six hundred, whatever, but um I just think that it's something that um, this, you know, it's a, you know, the idea of doing that is a good gesture. And it's not about um, um, who pays more, um, because whether you do or not, the five hundred dollars is something extra that they, right now, no taxpayer has, so um, from the city. And it's just something that's given back to them. So I think that it, I I think that it should be um based on a um the same figure opposed to a percentage. And then um, that's where my thoughts was, but then as I listened to Councilman Herring also, that would tax um the treasurer to have to go, you know, one by one and 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 do the uh the calculation. So it's just about, it it's not necessarily try to, you know, um, to me, um, you know, to you know, to, you know, to put money in people's pockets to to um, you know, to pay them back or what's what they've done. But it's just an adjustment, like you said, you know, you can, you know, buy a prescription or um, or whatever, whatever you need to do. But it's just, it's 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 just something that the city is trying to do to um, show care and appreciation. Um, and I think whatever, if if it goes up or down, it should be uh, at least the first round, it should be um, the same, a single figure.
Thank you. And Councilman Jones, I give you a last word to you and then I'll just do a consensus, so we'll belabor the point.
Okay, so I'm sitting here looking at my county tax bill for the uh last time that they sent a county tax bill, which was July uh for for June twenty twenty-two. And the amount of money that I paid to the city of Glen Arden was fifteen hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-eight cent. Uh, I got a home state tax credit of one thousand four hundred twenty-three dollars and twenty-two cent. And another credit from, it says town, I guess, city, from city of Glen Arden, of five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-one cent. Most of my tax bill, well, my tax bill, the total tax bill was six thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-one cent. And most of that money went to between the county and the state for what we have to pay in taxes. For the um infrastructure and other things that we have to pay for. Uh. Clean water, uh, other municipal, other municipal charges. So uh, with the other municipal charges and the city of Glen Arden, it came out to like eighteen hundred dollars is what I paid the city of Glen Arden in taxes. But I did get a credit for five hundred fifty-seven, so. Just to give you all an idea of, you know, what the tax bill looks like. Or what I, what I pay. I have um over three thousand square feet of property, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Um, all right, I I've, you know, I don't want to cheat anybody out of opportunity to speak on this. I'll go to Councilwoman Fareed in a second, but I do have two questions. Um, and one is for Councilman Herring, one is for uh Mr. Stewart. Councilman Herring, where did you get the one point five million dollars from?
Um, is, I said by one point two, and that's twenty-one hundred homes, which is what we have in the city.
Twenty-one hundred homes, okay.
Twenty-one hundred, five hundred dollars a pop. It's about one point one, I just rounded it up to one point two.
And does that it, does that twenty-one hundred homes include the new build out of Woodmore?
What, apartments or?
No, 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 the, the.
All the homes.
And condos.
The homes and condos, all the homes that pay property taxes. If any, all it, all we gotta do is get the list of everybody that paid to pay property taxes this year from the county, because they send out our bills, and that include all the homes that are built out in Glen Arden.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Herring. And Mr. Stewart, can we afford it?
Okay, um, thanks, Mr. President Ferguson. Um, we have a lot of projects um slated for next year and the ensuing years, the the other years with regard to capital infrastructure, fixing roads, um, fixing um sidewalks. Um, we have. capital infrastructure, fixing roads, um, fixing, um, sidewalks, um, we have a lot of, um, projects ahead, and that's one of the reasons why we have this money, because they were not being done. Um, for us to pay this, um, it would be a stretch. Um, because of the projects that we have, that, that's all I could say, but we do have money, can pay it, but how can we recover it? Um, when we start to do these capital, uh, infrastructure, um, work. So that's where I stop.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, thank you, Council President, um, I think, I, again, I think that this is an excellent gesture, I do think we need more time to work out the details, especially now hearing what the treasurer has said about that money, um, being earmarked for, uh, or needs to be earmarked for capital projects, um, and, I, I also wanted to ask Councilwoman Jones, if that's okay, Council President, what that credit was for that was received from the City of Glen Arden? Is there a, like a standing kind of credit program, or was that just unique to that particular year? You stated that you received a credit from Glen Arden of five hundred something dollars.
Uh, okay, I got all my bills here, no, last year was five fifty-seven, I mean, yeah, last year, uh, well, till two thousand and twenty-two, my bill, you know, our tax bill hadn't come yet. It should be here in July. Uh, June, somewhere around, or around July one. Uh, the year before, I got a, uh, town city credit again of five hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-three cent. It doesn't say what it was for, but it's under the Homestead, um, uh, it says credits and payments, and Homestead Tax Credit, they show that, and then they show a city credit. Uh, the year before that, it was five hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-five cent. Another year was five hundred and twenty, so, so it's something that's given, one year I got, um, Homestead Tax was seven hundred and sixty-two dollars, and the town credit was three hundred dollars and forty-six cent. And then there was a credit in there for Maryland National Capital Park and Planning was sixteen dollars, and a state credit was six dollars, and another credit for WS, STC was a dollar and forty-three cents, so, um, those were, at that year, it was two thousand and nineteen when I got all four of those credits. But the rest of, looking at the rest going back, I've always gotten a town credit of, of something, one year in two thousand and sixteen, it was seventy dollars and ten cent, so I would have to go to the county and ask them, uh, what that, what is that credit specifically for, all it says is town.
Okay, well.
Because in my, I'm sorry, in my tax bill, it says, it doesn't say City of Glen Arden, it still says Town of Glen Arden, and then it gives me my, uh, what my payment is, to them is fifteen hundred dollars, and then down here, it says town, so I'm assuming those two are associated.
Okay, well, well, thank you, I mean, I think, uh, my point now is that I think we should, we should, have a separate work session to discuss this and go through the details, so we come up with the right amounts, we may find out that we can afford to do more than five hundred, dollars per person, um, but I just think we need more time, I think it's a, again, an excellent idea, Councilman Herring. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, let me just say this, and this is what, this is what I'm talking about, because Ms. Jones pays way less than I pay on my home, and, um, you know, I'm looking at my tax bill. And I get, and you know, because I live in an older home, and I lived in my house longer, I get the Homestead Tax Credit. And every homeowner, I actually apply for that, because you should be applying for, because it'll get, basically give you a credit when you're, because they can only tax you so much interest on you, I mean, so much, um, property taxes on your house, and when you hit a certain threshold, and then you get a credit. So like with me, my total tax bill was two thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars, but that's after they took out two thousand and fifty-two dollars in the Homestead Tax Credit. And that's what, everybody's entitled to it, everybody should apply for it, um, but on my other house, because I have the Homestead Tax Credit on my house up the street, I can't get it on the second house, so in that house, I'm paying five thousand dollars, you know, so, um, you know, and then some, some cities, some seniors can get, you know, the homeowner's tax credit, which is another tax credit that's eligible to, um, certain, uh, um, seniors over sixty-five, but you gotta apply for that, and you have to have a certain income level also. So I mean, yeah, you get different credits on your bill, but then again, that's what I'm saying, five hundred flat rate would be the best rate, would be the best thing to do, and I don't want to go over that, because again, we do look, we do need to look long-term at some of the projects. But again, we also gotta look at the fact of the matter is that we have, we don't have some major projects this year, that's gonna free up cash for next year, we won't have these same projects next year. So if we don't, five hundred thousand dollars worth of streets this year, that money we freed up for next year, when we do the budget. You can do, put that same five hundred thousand dollars, recycle it into another project next year, so I don't see where there's gonna be an issue financing some of these projects, um, as well as the fact that we're gonna get a new apartment building built, we're gonna get permit fees from that, and once they improve their property, we're gonna get property taxes from that. You know, so there's gonna be additional revenue coming into the city that will, I think, uh, offset, this money, and this is like a one-time rebate, so it's like, we, we, I mean, the city's been very frugal with their, with their spending. You know, so I think that, looking ahead and long-range planning, um, we do have other revenue streams that will be coming in, as long as we're not out here, you know, going crazy with salaries and everything else, you know, um, so, again, like I said, you know, that's why I'm saying five hundred dollars is, and then, because I could be saying, I could say, well, okay, you know what, you're getting, you know, Councilman Jones is only paying fifteen hundred dollars, so she don't need as much as I have, that, if I'm paying more, she should only get two hundred dollars, and I don't think that's fair. She's been in the city, she's contributed, all of us have been in the city, everybody's been in the city over a couple of years, you, if you've been in the city over a couple of years, you don't put ten, twenty thousand dollars into the city already. So getting back five, five hundred dollars, I think would be a, a nice gesture, and I think that's where we should look at, a flat rate of five hundred dollars, and not try to do it based on percentages, uh, or, or how much you pay, or how long you've been here, because then you get into a whole bunch of back and forth about, you know, and I'm trying to pay high school games, you know, I, I've been here longer than you, and you're this, and you're that, and all this other mess, no, everybody getting five hundred dollars, and that's it. You know, no matter where you live, or no matter how long you've been here, if you paid into the kitty, you get something back, and everybody pay more than five hundred dollars to the kitty, so, thank you.
Alright, thank you, alright, so this consensus, is, is not whether we have, actually have the program, I agree with Councilwoman Fareed that it should be brought to a work session, we should, discuss it, work it out, the resolution should be brought forth of how the, the plan should grow out. I, I think, overall, the bottom of what Councilman Herring is asking for is one point two million dollars to earmark, um, in the budget for two thousand and twenty-four, for a program like this, that will be built out, um, in a work session in, two thousand and twenty-four. With that, this is just a consensus, whether to earmark one point two million dollars for, for some sort, of rebate program, whatever it'll end up being, after we work through it, um, some sort of, uh, rebate program in the FY twenty-four budget. Yes, to include the one point two million, no, to not include the one point two million, alright. Uh, we'll start off with, um, uh, Councilwoman Jones.
Pass.
Council, uh, Councilman Hairston?
Just for one point two million?
Just to earmark one point two million, uh, the, the program has not been built out yet, it's just earmarked for, uh, for, uh, fiscal year twenty-four.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Councilman Fareed?
Um, the amount is the amount that I'm not sure of, I want to say one point five, I just want to be, I just want to make sure we have enough, like, I don't know that there are, like, I haven't seen anything that shows this twenty-one hundred homes, so I don't know, like, I don't know if we have, if we're putting aside enough, that's why I want to go through the work session with it, but if we, if we need to earmark a number now, I would rather just round it up to, you know, so we're covered in cases more than twenty-one hundred homes, because I think, um, it was said that we need to get that list from the county to make sure.
So you're proposing that we go from one point two to one point five?
Yeah, if we're not gonna wait to go through and actually do the detail to find out what the exact number is, if we, if we feel we need to earmark it right now.
Okay, and just to be clear, we are gonna do that work, but because that work is not done right now, and this was supposed to be, go through the changes that?
Well, right, well, well, that's what, that's what my bigger concern is, that either way, we have to work it through, so I don't know why we just don't go through the work session, do the amount, and then whatever that amount is, then we go ahead and pass an amendment, and I'm not sure why we have to say an amount right now.
Because it has to be appropriated.
But if we do an amendment, wouldn't we be able to appropriate it with that amendment?
Yeah, but I think the point is, we wouldn't have to if we just do it now, so if we don't use the whole one point five million, um, and let's say, Councilman Herring's figures are accurate, and it's one point two million, then we don't have to come back to do, uh, an ordinance to amend anything. So is it a possibility that we could amend it? Yes, um, is it a possibility that we can amend it at one point five? I, I don't know.
Well, that's why I'm saying, go higher, one point five, so we have that cushion, so we don't have to do it again, if we need to put an amount in right now.
Okay, so, you're, you're, and it's not a motion, so you're recommending one point five, so at one point five, do you want to include it or not?
Yeah, yeah, I definitely want to include it, if we need to include it now, is what I'm saying, I just think it should be higher, because we don't know the calculations. And to your point, if it is the one point two, then there's nothing we need to do later in terms of an ordinance.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilman Hairston, I'm coming back to you, since the number was raised, is your answer still yes?
Y'all raised it to three million dollars, right? This is, it's the will of fortune, alright, I'm glad, I'm, I'm cool with that, yes.
Alright, yes, alright, um, Councilwoman Guillaume?
Uh, my vote is yes, what, no vote, sorry, my decision is yes, and I concur with what Councilwoman Fareed said, rather, aim high just to be safe, and then we can go low.
Okay, um, where am I, uh, oh, sorry, Councilman Harry, uh, I know what your answer's gonna be, but, Councilman Harry?
Yes, yes, and, and just to say, it's probably gonna actually be lower than that, because again, twenty-one hundred residences include, also include, um, the apartments, so, they're probably be lowered in the twenty-one hundred, but I was just trying, that was my high number, it was actually one point two, so, but one point five is fine, if y'all want to do that.
Okay, uh, Vice President Ferguson?
Uh, for clarity, is this something like, um, a one-time rebate, rebate, or, um, is this something that is intended annually?
Yeah, Councilman Harry?
Yeah, that's, it's just a one-time.
Okay, because, because my concern was, after I thought about it, was, um, I know there had been talk about, um, you know, whether we can afford to increase, um, to give increases to the, um, our employees. And so, if that was, my concern was that if, you know, we go in an increase with these salaries, not saying what's, what's, um, predicted, but, that, and then, and that, um, annually, uh, I would have a concern, so if it's just, you know, a, a one-time rebate, but for now, I'm, I would say yes. But then I think we need to work things out.
Thank you, um, I, my, my answer will be yes, uh, to just earmarking it until we see something, you know, um, concrete to actually make a decision on what that program looks like, so yes, Councilwoman Jones, you passed?
Yes, I'm gonna pass, because I wanted, hmm, I, I pass.
Okay, and that's why I said, this isn't to actually approve the program, this is just to earmark it, if we want to, if we go through the work session, have everything together, uh, and it's, you know, check with Mr. Stewart, you know, against the capital projects that we have, and we still feel like that, going through a work session and have some concrete in twenty twenty-four, then we move forward, but this is just to earmark it, for the opportunity, so, alright. Thank you, Councilman Harry. Uh, was, that, that's it for general operations? Alright, and one more town center, I don't think there are any changes to here. Senator Memorial, I don't recall any questions or adjustments there. Uh, the Gold Row, we are adjusting the, um, rules as we went over, uh, were there any other questions here? Okay, and I think the last, well, I think Councilwoman, uh, Guillaume, like you, Fareed had a, detailed, but it's a farmer's market, any, uh, questions on American Rescue Plan? So here none, we've gone through the budget.
Wait, 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 wait.
Okay.
Um. Now, this is the, the budget we're supposed to be going with.
Correct, yes.
Why is that pool, that admin pool car in there for forty thousand dollars? Get it out of there.
Mr. Stewart, please remove this.
So close.
We'll do.
Uh, Councilman, Councilwoman Fareed?
Thank you, um, I think you might have just said it, and I missed it, but the, um, the vaccine, uh, clinic, the amount for that, it should be in, coming out of ARPA.
Is it in here?
I did not see it in there, and I went, when I mentioned it earlier, Mr. Stewart said it would need to be added. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna pull up the email now, they had the amount.
Alright. Uh, we'll remove the admin car pool at the vaccine clinic, I believe that's the only adjustment here. Alright. Now with that. Uh, now we move on to salaries, but before we get deep into that, Miss, Habita? Um, was there a presentation, or are we just talking through this?
Uh, there is a present.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
There, there is a gentleman who will be joining us, who did the, prepared the classification plan.
Okay.
Whenever, whenever you're ready.
Okay, um. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, the emails indicated five thousand dollars, and that was, um, for, the cost of vaccines, as well as educational materials and other items that would be needed for the vaccination program throughout.
Okay. Alright, um, are there any other questions before we, uh, transition to a closed session, unless there's any opposition for us going into a closed session for salaries? Let me entertain that first, hearing none, are there any other, uh, because the plan is to go into, uh, to adjourn the open session and go into closed session, um, and then from there, I think we will, uh, adjourn unless there's anything else pressing. Alright. Hearing none. Stop sharing for a second. Hearing none, uh, where is it? I read it every time. Uh, pursuant to the annotated code of Maryland State Government Article ten dash five oh eight A, the council by majority vote may retire to a executable closed session anytime during the meeting. Uh, should the council retire to a executable or closed session, the chair, uh, will announce the reasons, and a report will be issued at a future meeting disclosing the reasons for such closed session. Uh, today, I, um, I motioned that we go to closed session to discuss personnel salaries. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, and I'm just gonna go voice vote, just because it's, we're going to the closed session, so, um, matter of course, you do the roll call, we're going into closed session, please.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilman Herring, Hairston, I'm sorry, Hairston? Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Council President Curtis?
Yes. Yes.
Vote seven zero seven.
Alright, so the people are coming with us, I, I welcome any objections, but, uh, I would like to at least have, uh, the Sabata in there and Treasurer Stewart in there as he prepared the budget and he was um, the lead, one of the lead persons helping prepare this with, uh, the classification person, so there's, it's not like there's anything that he has not seen, and actually questions he could probably answer. Um, Ms. Sabata, is there anybody else that should be?
Uh, Mr. Everson is, uh, has joined us, he's ready to present.
Okay, outside of that, um, all elected officials. Ms. Sabata? Havita, sorry.
Okay.
Um, and Mr. Stewart and Mr. Eversting. For everybody else, this open session is now closed.